Welcome to the June 15, 2021 Planning Commission Tech Exchange Committee meeting. My name is Blanny Miller and I'll be chairing the meeting today. We are operating in a virtual environment and will likely do so for the foreseeable future, although we might discuss that today. I would like to ask for patience as we use this platform for our public meetings. There may be a slight delay as we transition between speakers, presentations, and participants. If any participants have issues with the technology, please send a message to the moderator. Keegan McDonald is moderating the meeting. We have one item on our agenda today and I would ask the commissioners to hold all questions until the conclusion of the presentation. Our first item on the agenda is text change TC-17A-20. And with that, I believe I'll pass it over to staff for our presentation. Is that right?
Yep.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller. I'm John Anagnos from Planning and Development. So I have a presentation that's going to be a pretty high-level explanation of the text change and then if there's any questions, we can get into more detail. So this is TC-17A-20. And so to give you an understanding of what that A means, this was authorized by City Council last October as a text change to create Transit Overlay District or modify the existing Transit Overlay District and create a new Transit Overlay District called Transit Overlay District Residential, TODR. Due to some changes that were requested by City Council at their meeting earlier this month to the missing middle text change TC-520, that made the standards in TC-520 very similar to the standards that were proposed for TODR. And so because we're still figuring out with council where TC-5 is going to end up in terms of the dimensional standards for residential districts, we decided that it was best to separate TC-1720 into TOD, TC-17A for TOD and TC-17B for TODR. And so you will see TODR at a later date, but for today, this is just the TOD portion. So this is the existing Transit Overlay District that's currently in the code that was written with the initial Unified Development Ordinance to serve as an overlay district for the light rail service that was planned at that time. Of course, that service is not going to be implemented and so we now have a plan for Bus Rapid Transit. And so City Council has recommended or to be authorized that the existing TOD district be revised to reflect the needs and goals of Bus Rapid Transit so that it can be applied to the BRT routes that are being designed and planned right now. And the goals of the Transit Overlay District were set out by a process called Equitable Development Around Transit that took place over the last two years or so, in which you reviewed at the beginning part of this year and has since been adopted as additional content for the comprehensive plan. There is also an equitable development, equitable transit-oriented development guidebook that is also part of the equitable development around transit process. And that guidebook does recommend the implementation of these overlay districts. And the goals that are identified in EDAT and the ETOD guidebook are about housing supply and diversity around transit to provide ridership and opportunity for those of different incomes and backgrounds to enjoy the bus service, additionally making the environment around the bus service amenable to traveling to the bus service and then providing active uses to serve riders. And so at this point, there is not a mapped extent that is being reviewed publicly for the application of the Transit Overlay District. That is a process that will begin later this year, once this text change is finalized. And so the approach, the basic approach to mapping the TOD would be along the Bus Rapid Transit corridors. And the first two would be the Western Route on Western Boulevard from downtown to Cary or from downtown to the edge of Raleigh's jurisdiction towards Cary. And then the Southern Route, which will be on South Solander. And you can get an idea of what, this is a very general sense of what that might look like and this includes the other two, the Eastern and Northern. The Eastern Route is in a station area planning process right now for New Bern. And so we expect that planning process to give more detail about where TOD should be mapped. And then the Northern Route along Capitol is eventually going to be extended if the Wake Transit Plan supports that in the future in a subsequent phase to potentially continue on Capitol Boulevard or Six Forks Road. And there'll be a study starting later this year to start developing some of the details for that decision. So for right now, we're really thinking about Western and Southern. And this map really is not, this is subject to a significant amount of change, but this is just to give you an initial sense of where this might apply. And just one more thing, that would be a rezoning process that would come to you for review as well, the application of the TOD. So the Transit Overlay District has several components that are related to how it's going to support Bus Rapid Transit and those are listed here. I won't read these off because we're going to go through them one by ones. So we'll start with prohibited uses. So there was already a number of prohibited uses in the existing TOD that's currently in the code. And so many of those are retained. This is basically retaining those prohibited uses. And those are uses that tend to be oriented towards driving, drive-through restaurants, car washes, the types of things that you expect to see in a large vehicular corridor that may not be the most transit-supported. And so many of those are prohibited. You will notice that single-family and duplex housing, so detached and attached, or actually as they're defined in the use table, single-unit living and two-unit living are prohibited. That doesn't mean that if someone has an existing single-family house or duplex, that if it is damaged or unoccupied, that they would be unable to resume using it. So that is protected. It's really just new development that would be affected by that. Parking standards are reduced in the TOD, so there's no required parking. And then there's a maximum of two spaces per dwelling unit. That's the same as what downtown required before City Council made the change to remove parking requirements downtown. And so that is basically saying that if parking is going to be contributing to the cost of housing, the ability to detach or separate the cost of parking from the housing price enables developers to provide a lower-cost housing product. Next is streetscape and block perimeter. So what the TOD does is says that regardless of, actually, I'm sorry, if there is an urban frontage already applying to a site, it can retain that. Otherwise, it's going to have the urban limited frontage requirements apply. And so that means buildings close to the street, parking between the building and the street is prohibited, and then a minimum number of pedestrian entrances per linear foot of street frontage. And then along with that, there is a requirement that the streetscape type that's selected is the mixed-use or Main Street streetscape. And so what that means is more of the area outside the curb, so the area that has the sidewalks, the street trees, and the street yard. In the mixed-use and Main Street streetscape types, more of that area is dedicated to sidewalks and less of it is dedicated to a grassy street yard. It also is wider. So instead of the six-foot sidewalk, it is a larger, up to 14-foot sidewalk. And then there is a provision in the UDO that an applicant in a rezoning case can request to be exempted for block perimeter and other street connectivity requirements as part of their rezoning as a zoning condition and City Council can approve that. It's one of the only times, I believe it's the only place where zoning condition can be less restrictive than a normal code, a normal UDO requirement. And so what TOD says is that ability to do that is not allowed in sites with the TOD map. So you would have to comply regardless of whether you have a rezoning. You would have to comply with the block perimeter standard. So more public street connectivity. And so this whole component is basically saying travel to and from the BRT stations and in the neighborhoods around BRT service needs to support pedestrian activity. It needs to be active and it needs to be comfortable for pedestrians. The next part is the outdoor amenity requirements. So all zoning districts require, well, all mixed-use districts require 10% of a site area to the outdoor amenity area. Those standards also have some additional requirements for the DX, the downtown mixed-use zoning district, as well as mixed-use districts that have an urban frontage applied. And so what this text change TC-17 does is adopt those into the TOD overlay and basically says those same standards apply. And you recently reviewed some modifications to those Plaza standards as part of TC-121. And so some of the things that are part of that is requiring outdoor furniture, also for taller buildings, buildings seven stories or taller. The size of the outdoor amenity is increased according to the size of the building, depending on whether it's residential, the amount of residential component within the building affects that as well. But basically making a potentially larger and more well-appointed outdoor space to complement additional density. The other thing that that TC-121 text change did was allow rainstorm water infrastructure to be placed in this area. And so that also can be, have stormwater management benefits in areas that we are expecting to have additional density and redevelopment of areas that may be currently used as, have more landscaping. So the next component of the TOD is a density bonus. And this is one of the key items that was recommended by the Equitable Transit-Oriented Development Guidebook and is also one of the actions that's identified in the equitable development around transit amendments to the comprehensive plan, which is to think about how to encourage affordable housing. And so the way that this works is that you have a height limit in stories that is set by the mixed-use zoning district. And if you have, you may increase that height by 50% in stories and it rounds up. So if it's a fraction of a story, you go to the next story. So for a three-story district, 50% increase would be one and a half additional stories, so that becomes two. So in a three-story district, you would, a developer would be able to build up to a five-story building if the residential units in those extra two stories, one-third of them are affordable, subsidized affordable units. And what that means is that they are affordable for income less than 50% of the area median income and that that affordability remains in place for 30 years. And then there's another height bonus, which is an additional 30% of height if the entire building is devoted to non-residential use. So that's basically going to be an office building or potentially an office building with a retail or personal service element in the ground floor. And so just to talk a little bit about where those numbers came from, this, the numbers were developed as part of the equitable development around transit process. There was a consultant that was involved with that process that did some market research and projected that that is the proportion of units that would be indicated by that bonus is likely to be something that would be utilized by developers. And that's a real challenge with developing incentives like this, density bonus incentives, is that if you make the required amount of affordable units very low, developers may take advantage of it, but it doesn't end up producing very many affordable units. So you have failed to provide the affordable units for that reason or to reach your affordable housing goals for that reason. If the amount of affordable units is very high, then no developers will make use of the incentive. And again, you may fail your goals for affordable housing units because of lack of acceptance of the bonus. So you really have to kind of thread a needle or find a middle ground where it is a large enough percentage to get the bonus that you are making a meaningful impact in affordable housing, but also low enough that people actually make use of it. And we think that's where this number, these numbers are fitting in. But this is the kind of thing where if after a few years of this overlay being in place, we're really not seeing any projects that are making use of it, then there is opportunity to revisit and say, maybe that number wasn't quite right. Okay. The next part of it is dimensional standard. So what the TOD says is if it is mapped on a residential district, which we expect to be pretty rare, the main way that we would see this being mapped on a residential district is in situations where there are large lots, about an acre or more, that are directly adjacent, directly fronting on a BRT corridor. And also when we've been thinking about the mapping process and we've been working on a draft map, really thinking that those would be lots that are not part of larger existing subdivisions. There are existing subdivisions on some of these corridors that do have home lots approaching an acre. And so we would probably try to avoid those as well. And really be kind of those, those older lots that just never really found a commercial development or a multi-unit development and are just kind of still a single-family house or some, you know, low-intensity development pattern, but are right along the corridor or a large lot. Those are areas that this could be applied. And so what the TOD would say in those situations is regardless of the residential district that is currently mapped on that parcel, it could be developed using the residential mixed-use standards and RX3 in particular, the three-story height. And so that would allow apartment and townhouse units. And then a pretty typical density that developers can reach in an RX3 district is about 15 to 20 units per acre. And so that's kind of what you could expect in that situation. And then the other thing here is that the neighborhood transition would only require Zone A. And so that is aligned with the TC-620 text change, which only requires Zone A for all mixed-use districts or residential building types and maximum heights of three stories. The next part is tree conservation. And so currently for all sites larger than two acres in the city of Raleigh, development sites, tree conservation is required and that is a minimum of 10% of the site area. And so what TOD would do is to increase the minimum site area for tree conservation to apply from two acres to four acres. So those sites between two and four acres would not have to provide any tree conservation at all. And then for sites larger than four acres, there is also a reduction in the tree conservation requirements. And so what that is, is there is primary tree conservation and there's secondary tree conservation. So primary tends to be environmentally sensitive areas and also areas along thoroughfares that are identified for primary tree conservation area. And the key thing about primary tree conservation is while the standard is 10% of the site area, if more than 10% of your site is determined to have primary tree conservation areas, you must record all of it, even if it goes above 10%. Now, there is an absolute maximum, I think it's 20%, 20% or somewhere thereabouts, but the tree conservation does, that, you know, can go above 10% if it's primary. The secondary tree conservation is essentially just the border of the site. And it's really meant to be kind of a buffer area from this one site to another. And so for sites larger than four acres, what TOD says is that secondary tree conservation area, that's just that perimeter buffer, that is not required at all. And then for the primary, which like I said, can be environmental features like riparian areas and steep slopes, as well as some aesthetic considerations like areas along thoroughfares and highways, those aesthetic primary TCA requirements would go away. And so really it would just be the environmental, environmentally oriented primary tree conservation area. So that's riparian areas and steep slopes. Next up, commercial uses. So currently in the office mixed-use and the residential mixed-use districts, there are limited use standards that apply to commercial uses, mostly commercial uses other than office. And those are things like retail, restaurants, personal service, like a hair salon or a tattoo studio. So those types of uses could only be established in OX or RX if they're part of a building that has an office use or residential use in it, one of the primary uses that's allowed in OX and RX. And there's also a maximum size. And it's a little bit smaller in RX, it's a little bit larger in OX. The maximum size is a hard cap in RX, 4,000 square feet. On OX, it's 4,000 square feet or 15% of the building square footage, whichever is larger. The other thing is that in RX, that non, that commercial use must be located at the corner of two public streets. And so if a building, if a site, development site is not at the corner of two public streets, those uses are totally impossible in an RX district. And so what TOD says is you may have those types of commercial districts in residential mixed-use, even if it's not at the corner of two public streets. It could be the middle of a block face. It also removes those maximum sizes for both OX and RX, but it retains the requirement that it has to be in a multi-tenant building. So you couldn't have a standalone restaurant. You couldn't have a standalone retail establishment, things like that. So it's not that significant of a change to the district to say it's allow standalone retail. It still has to be a multi-tenant building with office or residential component, but there is a relaxation of some of those limited use standards. And then this is a final aspect. So the Transit Overlay District prohibits those vehicle-oriented uses that you saw at the beginning. It also prohibits the single-unit living and two-unit living. And then it has a minimum height of two stories. So if you have a new development, you cannot build a one-story building if it's approved as is currently proposed. So that raises a question of suppose I have an existing development that's a one-story retail use with a drive-through or one or the other. Suppose I have a one-story use or a use with a drive-through. If that use is damaged or vacant for a time, does that mean it has to be completely redeveloped as something that would comply with the TOD requirement of a minimum of two stories and prohibition on drive-through? And so we decided after thinking through this through that it does make sense, there are provisions elsewhere in the code for existing non-conforming uses and structures, that there should be provisions to consider what happens to those structures and uses. So what this says is a property owner has two years, if they have a non-conforming use, that that use may be vacant. And if they come back and reestablish that use within that two-year period, then they may keep that non-conforming use. So if it's a car wash or a drive-through or, you know, one of those uses identified at the beginning, they have a window where they can come back. Then for structures, if the structure is damaged, whether voluntary or involuntarily, it can be rebuilt in the same form that it was before. And so this is a little bit of a departure. The first bullet point here is a departure from non-conformity standards elsewhere in the code in that the typical standard is only one year. So we're actually allowing additional time here, doubling the time span for a non-conforming use to be vacant. For structures, the typical standard is if the owner demolishes voluntarily, then they must build back in compliance with whatever the current code requirement is. This is now saying, even if it's voluntary on the part of the owner, if they decide, I just want to re, I want to renovate, I want to do, you know, a pretty major overhaul of my building or rebuild from scratch, if they want to do that voluntarily and they're bringing back the same type of structure, essentially the same development, that's okay. And then of course, if there's a fire, flood, something else that is a total loss for the property, similar treatment. And that they could rebuild even aspects of the building that are non-conforming. And then the next part is if they want to expand a non-conforming structure, they could expand by up to 25%, but that expansion would have to conform with the UDO and any new requirements from the TOD. And then finally, if they want expansion beyond 25%, they will need to go to the Board of Adjustment and request a special use permit. So that is similar to standards elsewhere in the code, but it's actually a little bit more lenient towards existing development. So there are a number of other issues that we discussed with other departments at the city and that we heard from the public about. And so these are things we just wanted to bring to your attention in case you had any thoughts about these as well. So actually, the first, I guess the first bullet was related to TODR, but it still is a little bit relevant to, actually no, that it was only relevant to TODR. So please disregard the first bullet. The second bullet is about the density bonus for affordable units. And so in some cities where there are density bonuses or other incentives for affordable units to be included in market rate developments, there has been a practice of developers having a separate entrance for the affordable units to essentially bifurcate the development to where there's one aspect of the development that is somewhat exclusively for market rate tenants and one aspect that is for the subsidized affordable tenants. And many people have spoken out against those and basically saying that is a form of economic and in some cases by extension, racial or ethnic segregation is therefore wrong. The term that is sometimes used is poor door. A little bit cruel, but that is the term that's used. We decided not to include that because we did not have a direct authorization or direction on that topic from council. And so without that, we didn't really want to make a judgment about that. And then outdoor recreation and vehicle rental are prohibited uses in the list of prohibited uses in the TOD. And so that was something we considered because outdoor recreation includes sports stadiums or sports, outdoor sports arenas. And so there are situations where it might be desirable to have transit service for a large stadium-type use or arena-type use in order to facilitate large crowds being able to reach and then leave such a use when there are events there. You know, when you have tens of thousands of people, transit is a great asset to transporting those people. And then vehicle rental, vehicle sales and rental is proposed to be prohibited in TOD. And so one of the thought processes here is if I'm a person who is either traveling from another city or I'm a resident near BRT service and I've chosen not to own a vehicle or I don't own a vehicle by necessity, it may be convenient for me to be able to transition between modes to take the Bus Rapid Transit to a station area. And then if there's a vehicle rental outlet in the station area, if I need to make a regional trip to another city elsewhere in the state, that I have that ability to transfer modes. And so that might be a resource for people who don't have a vehicle. And then exempting city park properties, the, some of the requirements in the TOD, such as the urban limited frontage, the maximum height of two stories, those kind of things may be difficult for the city's Parks, Recreation and Cultural Resources Department to manage when they're doing their facilities planning, when they're doing a master plan for a park facility. It may be something that the park programming conflicts with those urban form goals that are part of the TOD. And so that the consideration is maybe we don't want to create that conflict, to basically exempt park properties from those requirements. The way that we're actually thinking about addressing that is to potentially just not map the TOD on city park properties. We think that's probably an easier way of addressing that issue. And then requiring additional amenity areas. And we had conversation with Park Stat. They wanted us to be aware that the areas around Bus Rapid Transit corridors are some of the most urbanized parts of Raleigh. They are some of the areas where land values are very high or relatively high in the Raleigh area. And there is also scarce undeveloped property available or property that would be appropriate for park use. And so they wanted us to be aware that it will be difficult for the Parks Department to acquire additional property to provide for additional park demand from the new density that could be coming with these BRT routes in the TOD district. And that one of the ways to address the additional demand for park experiences is to simply require private development to have more amenity area to serve their own tenants and residents. And that's something that while we think is a valid concern... And that's something that, while we think is a valid concern, considering that the recent text change TC1 is already kind of discussing those very issues and thinking through that, we didn't really want to, to go back through and rethink that process. That we felt like that, that other text change did that job well, uh, and that, that we'd let that stand on its own. Uh, and so you have until August to make a recommendation. And, uh, of course, you would need to make a recommendation back to the Planning Commission and then they could make a recommendation to the City Council. Need to answer any questions?
Thank you very much for that presentation. To kick off, just looking at the date, it looks like our deadline for action, you said it was the fourteenth?
Yes, of August.
And our next text change committee meeting is not until the seventeenth. Um, and I spoke with Justin Remetta earlier today briefly. He said that this, um, depending how, how it goes today, there's not, and obviously we're, we're out for the summer after, um, next Tuesday's Planning Commission meeting. So, um, if we need to come back for more information, is seek more information after this meeting to come back, then we'll have to ask for an extension from council at that time. So, um, and I, I think he said that there was an expectation that that will probably happen. So I just wanted to, um, mention that when we're going through questions and if we want more information, that kind of thing. Um, and with that, I, um, will bring it back to the table for additional questions. I noticed we have two attendees on the line. Um, if you all have questions and comments as well, feel free to, um, ping the moderator as we walk through this, um, cause we'd love to get additional feedback as well in the more casual, trying to do the virtual version of the more casual committee setting that we have. So bringing it back to the table, I received a list of, a couple of questions from DSAC and then from other committee members. What do you think is the best way to walk through some of these? Maybe to look at the text change itself and walk through it, or perhaps just to tick off some of these questions? Do you have any thoughts, John?
Uh, I do have the actual draft ordinance available if you'd like to use that.
Great, yeah, just start walking through there. Or?
Yep, uh, find the window here. Are, is it, are you able to see the ordinance there?
Uh, not yet.
Hmm. One moment. Coming through now?
I see your cursor, but the, the screen is gray.
Any luck that time?
It looks like it may still be loading. I guess maybe it's completed. It is still showing its dark screen.
Okay.
John, if you, you wanna send me the presentation or the, the?
Let's try, that, did it work that time?
Perfect.
Yes, now we're seeing it.
I think WebEx wasn't seeing it in all my open windows, sorry. Uh, yeah, so if you have a particular item that you wanna look at, uh, just let me know and I'll scroll there.
Great, um, I sent over a list of questions right before this meeting. I, I received most of them today, um, that might be helpful to reference in picking through some of these items. I know we've already listed a couple of them, let me pull up my notes. Um, actually looking at, looking at these, maybe it would be helpful just to sort of walk through this text change. I know it's, um, about ten pages of content, but we can probably make quick work of it, just walking through it together.
Yeah, no problem. Would, I mean, would you like me to just?
Can I let you, yeah, I was looking at this.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Can I let you take a look at this? Thank you.
Yeah. Um, let's see. So the first part is, this is the table in chapter one of the UDO that specifies what building types are allowed in which residential districts. And so what this is basically doing is modifying that table, whereas currently it says that townhouses and apartments are not allowed in residential six. What it's doing is saying, once the TOD is applied, then the RX standards would apply and therefore you would be able to have those additional building types allowed. And so that table needs to be modified and the, the text that goes along with it to basically say, yes, you can have those building types that otherwise are not allowed, but only in the TOD overlay. And there's another note that's similar that already exists in that table, uh, that talks about the conservation development option, which is another time where different apartment and townhouse building types are allowed into lower density residential districts. In that case, as part of, you know, a large development that sets aside open space. And so it's basically just paralleling that, but saying, and for the TOD.
Um, Chair Miller, do you want to throw questions out now or?
Yeah, let's throw them out as we walk through, if you have any questions.
Yeah, John, sorry if I'm dense here, which happens often, so don't, don't worry to go ahead and call me out. But I've heard twice now that, oh, attached houses, okay. So I guess my question's gonna come up later in the R4, R6. I'm just confirming that detached houses are not allowed, correct, in the TOD overlay?
As a new development, that's correct.
Okay. But existing, if it's grandfathered or whatever, I got it.
Well, that's, so I think these might need to be, um, I think there might be an error in that R4 part, cause I think that was referring to the TODR. We kind of had to do a last-minute revision to this to remove all the TODR. And so I think that's a remnant of that, so that's a good note, um, to clean that up and make sure it accurately reflects.
Okay, cool.
Just the TOD. No, that, I think that is the leftover from the TODR, that's, that's an error.
Great, thank you.
But it will come, I mean, if TODR comes back, that will be included in that.
And in R6, would attached houses be allowed also? In addition to townhouses and apartments, or is that already the case in R6 and that's why we didn't mention it here?
Um, the two-unit living use would be prohibited. Town, uh, attached houses are allowed in general in residential six. And so I don't think we would modify the table to indicate specifically that the, the use that typically occupies a, attached house is prohibited. I think, I think we can leave that as is. Um, you know, Ken or Keegan might have other thoughts on that, but I don't know that we need to call that out in this table, cause this table is oriented towards the building types.
Well, and that was, and we haven't gotten to section seven, but in section seven, which is section five-five-one, five-five-one, C-one, D lists attached house as well as townhouse and apartment permitted in all residential districts. So, does that conflict or am I reading something into it that it's not intended to say?
Where, where was that, Mr. York, under section seven, where?
On page three.
Yep.
Uh, under section seven, which is section five-five-one, which is the TOD.
Right.
Subsection C-one-D says the attached townhouse and apartment building types are permitted in all residential districts. And if we're not allowing attached, we're allowing it. That's, uh, and it's because of exactly what John alluded to, because TODR got pulled out of it, there was edits that needed to be made. So I think we just need to clarify and make sure the words reflect whether deta-, uh, excuse me, attached is going to be allowed everywhere or just in certain zoning districts. If we're prohibiting two-unit living.
Yep, I think that's correct. We will, uh, probably have to strike attached from that section.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, the next part, this, the, uh, can we feel comfortable with that first section? With the changes discussed?
Yes.
Okay. The next part is just adding the TOD to the list of districts where the urban plaza requirements apply. So like I said in that presentation, that's downtown mixed use and then mixed use districts where there's an urban frontage. And so it's basically saying, and TOD. Uh, this next section is modifying the district intent statements to indicate where, while the, the basic general intent of the district is to have certain building types and certain density in other circumstances, uh, such as conservation development option or in this case, the TOD. And there are other examples, Cottage Court being another example. There may be differences from the, the basic intent of the district. And so this is just adding one extra item in that list of places where you might deviate from the district intent, which is in TOD where the RX districts apply, or RX district standards apply when it's mapped on a residential district. So just making sure that there's not a conflict between that intent statement and what the actual dimensional standards say.
Okay, I think I got it now. So you're, we're just adding the TOD under R4, but the dimensional standards are somewhere else.
Right, so this, there's actually a, two degrees of reference here. Basically, these intent statements are saying, unless otherwise stated, the residential dimensional standards are gonna be in chapter two in the residential district section. Unless you go to the TOD, unless you're in a TOD district, in which case you need to check that section. And then the TOD section is gonna say, you're gonna use the RX standards from chapter three instead of the residential standards from chapter two.
So this is not gonna be in the TODR, it's, it's part of the RX comment, or it's part of the RX change in the code, the RX standards that allows down here in section five.
There is a, a likelihood that when TODR comes along, this TODR will be added to these district intent statements to say also there, you know, it basically would be these, these items. And where it says within the TOD, it will probably say within the TOD or the TODR, because, uh, there are potentially dimensional, changes to dimensional standards from the TODR as well.
Yeah, but I guess, and, and maybe I should know, but I'm, I'm just trying to confirm what the, what can be modified, how it can be modified, the dimensional standards density, et cetera.
That would be when the TOD is mapped on a residential district, that residential district, this, the, the, a site within that residential district can be developed using the residential mixed use, three stories dimensional standards in place of a residential district standard. So if I, if I have, uh, let's say a lot that's fronting on Western Boulevard, it's currently zoned R6. And then there's the city mapping process and the TOD is applied to my lot. Then, once that TOD is applied, even though my base district says R6, because I have the TOD, I am now able to develop my lot as if it was RX three. Like I have three, three stories and fifty feet, I can have an apartment, I can have a townhouse.
Okay, that's, that's what I thought. Um, but that, maybe others realize that, but that was confusing, but that's very helpful, thank you.
Okay. Uh, next up is the uh, building height. So this is in the section of the code that talks about how height, um, what the different heights and stories mean in chapter three. And so this is basically, again, resolving any potential conflict that might come up. If someone wants to make use of the density bonuses defined in the TOD section, well, their base district is gonna say, your height is three stories, you can't build to five stories. And so what this is saying is even if your mixed use district heights says three stories, there is an exception when you have TOD and that exception is explained in the TOD district, which is a height bonus.
John, this is a-
Yeah, sorry Dean, I was just gonna say, this is making way more sense to me now, because when I first reading through this, I was struggling, so this is great.
Yeah, yeah. This is, um, it's just a part of the code is that whenever we have things in the code, we do try to, where there's a topic that it relates to multiple sections, and we try to make sure we're affirming it across the sections and making sure it's consistent. Uh, but what that ends up doing is when you change one of them, it has that domino effect of meaning you do have to check and make sure you're not affecting any of the other places.
Roger that, and sorry, Commissioner Reins.
Excellent, thanks, Mr. Bryan, for your favor. Uh, just to clarify, the two exceptions for the height modifications are only related to office slash commercial and residential. There's no other options for peo- for an owner or developer to increase the height besides the one, the two that you outlined in the presentation, is that?
That's right, yeah, those were the only two. Hey?
Well, I, I had a, are we gonna hit that later, cause I had a question about that?
Yes, we will, yep, that's coming up pretty soon.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay. Um, so this section five is that, uh, the same provisions that were in the recent text change about neighborhood transition, basically saying only zone A applies for a maximum height of, a district with a maximum height of three stories where the building is a residential building type. Uh, so it's just carrying that through to TOD. And so that already applies in all mixed use district, except RX. Next up is, um, this is the descriptive statement for the transit overlay district. And so this has just been expanded a little bit to explain that it's related, um, to transit and give a little bit more of the con- of the, the goals that came from the EDAT process. Um, but this is, this is just an intent statement, so this isn't, um, terribly legally binding. But it does, it is aligned with the parts that are more strictly legally binding. Okay, so now we're actually into the TOD district standards. And so this is, this is the existing district that lives in chapter five. And so it's basically taking that existing district and we've added several new items here. The, the part A is basically letting, laying out some this basic, a baseline of saying, unless something is changed here, then refer to whatever the existing base district standard is. If it's not specifically changed, then it stays the same. And then also, uh, where it conflicts with NCOD, the TOD would control. The prohibited uses are largely the same as existing. And as you can see, you know, things that are oriented towards driving.
Staying on that section for just a moment, the single unit and two-unit living, is that attached and detached?
Those are the corresponding uses- Those are the corresponding uses for detached and attached building types. It, it's a little bit of a nitpicky distinction, but one of the important things to remember is that in a detached building, a building that was built to be a house, in many cases can be repurposed as an office building or something else. And so there are, that is a distinction. So single unit living means there's a single, one family living in a house. And two-unit living is a building where there are two residential units with two families.
Is that defined elsewhere, referenced elsewhere in the video?
Yes, those are defined in chapters.
But I assumed it was, okay, I assumed it was defined elsewhere.
So the, the building types are chapter one. All the uses are in chapter six.
Do we want to address the outdoor recreation here? And vehicle rental?
If you want to have that be something to be part of a motion, I guess, for later, I can mark that down. I can make a list of things that you'd like to include as a change.
Yeah, what do you, what do the other commissioners think about that? I, I think having vehicle rental makes a lot of sense to remove that prohibited use. Any thoughts on?
Mrs. Dean, I would agree with that. I would prefer to keep that in based on some comments that John discussed for transit.
Are you on board with that, Commissioner O'Haver?
Um, yeah. I don't know. I just, I'm thinking of some areas I've seen in our city and other cities and urban areas where there's vehicle rental. And it ain't great. And it certainly doesn't promote. I don't think, if I go back to, you know, the goals of allowing more housing, creating connecting walkable streets, encourage affordable housing and employment. And I guess it does support all forms of transportation. So I guess I can get behind it. But I've got a little bit of pause, not thinking through all that, but I, but I, I am curious about the outdoor recreation. John, I know you mentioned at the beginning, but I was still trying to get set up and might have missed something. But we can stick on rental for now and then I, I, if it is appropriate, I would like to also touch base on the recreation.
Sure. I was gonna say on the rentals, it reminds me of my, my sisters live in, in Brooklyn and New York. And obviously that they're, they're vehicle free. And the way that they're able to do that is obviously a great local transit system. But when they need to travel long distances, then they have the ability to rent a car for that purpose. So in that case, at least in those areas, it supports the ability for somebody to live without owning a car. So that they can still travel long distances. So that was, that's my thought behind supporting that.
A note about that as well. So for a new vehicle rental used to be established, the other components of the TOD, the minimum height of two stories and the urban limited frontage would still apply. So there would need, you know, it would have to be placed in a building if it's a new construction building that is two stories and has parking in the rear. And so that, in my experience, seeing vehicle rental in urban areas, that's typically not the format that they have. It's typically one story and the parking is all around the building. So I think those other components, while they might make it slightly more difficult for a national vehicle rental chain to be interested in something like that, I think do address some of the issues of that use not necessarily being supportive of the type of urban form and activation that is desired.
So I, and I don't disagree. You just made me think of recently, I rented a car in Charleston. I think, I can't remember Commissioner Miller, if you mentioned DC, but recently in DC out in San Francisco, you know, so I get it, but we're, let me just throw this out there for consideration. I mean, we're talking a quarter mile and nowadays, everything's delivered. I mean, I can get a rental car at my house and they're going to drive it to me and drop it off. So again, I, I hear what you're saying, I support. I'm just throwing that, I'm kind of processing verbally, I guess, thinking out loud.
I guess the alternative would be that they would take, if, if someone living there who did not own a car wanted to live that way, but needed to rent a car, they'd have to take the BRT to another spot. Either have it delivered or if there was a less expensive option, could, would the BRT, I'm, I'm trying to look back at the map. Would they be able to go straight from the BRT to a rental car spot? Or would all of the BRT be encompassed in the transit overlay district? Would they be able to access it without having to go, you know, two forms of transportation before they could get to a vehicle rental?
I mean, I think if they can walk a quarter mile, I thought this was within a quarter mile of the corridors is where we're thinking they're going to map it. So to your point, Commissioner Miller, maybe the mapping is a little bit different, but I thought I heard, I won't see the presentation in the backup, but maybe John can confirm that. I mean, a, a rental can be, as long as it's, well, I guess, okay, so I guess to your point, Commissioner Miller, the zoning has to be there within a quarter mile to allow a car rental, which might not be the case. So it might not necessarily, I shouldn't assume that you can walk a quarter mile and rent a car.
Just in general, the, you know, if folks want to go to car-free living, typically you have to go to more dense urban areas. And even in those areas, you still need access to renting a car in order to live car-free if you want to go long distance or that certainly helps support the idea of living without owning a car.
Yeah, I won't, I won't, I won't beat, beat it, but I just, even in some of those other more urban areas where I've rented a car literally inside a parking deck. So, you know, you've got retail on the outside. It's just done late for great street. But if y'all are behind it and have more experience than I do, then I'm, I'm happy to get, get behind it with y'all.
Okay.
For that particular use, can we apply a specific frontage requirement that would mitigate parking? See a parking up against the main thoroughfare?
So the TOD requires the urban limited frontage for all, all development. So there, it, once a TOD is mapped, no site within it could have, if it's new construction, could have parking in front of the building.
Okay, maybe I just read that wrong. Section D1A says when urban frontage is included, you're saying the all TOD will have urban. Okay, I missed that.
Yep. So there's, there's the part B. So it's basically saying where there's an urban frontage, which, so the urban frontages are green, urban limited, urban general and shopfront. And none of those allow parking between the building and the street. They all require parking to be in the rear. The, the difference between those four is the width and, and the, basically the, the bounds of the build-to range. So whether it's zero to 50, 20 to 50, zero to 20, and then the percentage of building face that has to be, or the percentage of parcel frontage that has to have a building face within the build-to range also varies in those. But the parking requirement is consistent across them. And so what this does is says, if you have an urban frontage, you stick with what you've got. If you don't have an urban frontage, you will be, you follow the urban limited requirements.
Thank you.
I don't need to belabor that. I'm, 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 let's keep moving. I agree with, with y'all.
Great. What about the outdoor recreation?
Are you asking me?
Yeah, well, I know that there are some thoughts about this, either allowing some type of outdoor recreation that's not a full arena type use. Or potentially allowing the full arena type use, hoping that, you know, folks use, that's exactly what transit is, is used for.
So that's a good point. There are, you could, if you wanted to change that prohibition, you could say outdoor recreation with the exception of a more specific form of outdoor recreation. There is a number of, of specific types that are listed in the code already. And so if you wanted to look at those and pick the ones that you'd like to be allowed, that is, you know, so it's not a all or nothing approach.
I think I'd be in favor of a medium approach as a sort of a high level comment. I, I love this concept on where the city needs to go to be walkable and equitable and environmentally friendly. And at the same time, some of the reduction in standards for the TOD, you know, are a little bit concerning from like an urban hotspot standpoint. You know, eliminating a lot of the tree conservation and some of those other requirements. So, you know, generally, as it is a general matter, I'm supportive of having more outdoor recreation, more parks, more amenities, that kind of thing in this area. So in, in that case, for, for those reasons, I'd be supportive of allowing outdoor recreation, certainly not prohibiting it. But maybe finding some middle ground that does not put a ton of pressure on the transit system while it's still being in its mid-level development phase. What do the other commissioners think?
So is, so they've got, we still have the 10% amenity area. I guess a portion of that now, the new text change can go, can be elevated at a higher level without 50% residential. I agree. I had some similar questions, Commissioner Miller, about the definition of recreation, what size it is. But then I also am asking who's required to pay for that recreation area? Is it the city that's going to put that in? Is that, is that going to be incumbent upon the applicant or developer or owner to provide that? So I just, I have some larger sort of higher level questions about what we're trying to, I mean, what are we trying to accomplish there, I guess, is what I'm saying.
So for me, it's just, right now it's a prohibited use. It's prohibited. There is no outdoor recreation allowed. So it would just eliminate that prohibition on outdoor recreation.
Can I try to clarify that question a little bit? So I think there's three different things that we're thinking of here. The first is outdoor amenity area, which is a requirement of, of development and is required to be 10% of the site area. And that is, that is not considered an outdoor recreation use for the purpose of this prohibition. That's simply an amenity area would basically be accessory use or not even necessarily considered a use at all fully because of this, the small scale of it. Then there's outdoor recreation that is accessory to a principal use that is allowed. So if I, if there's a church, which is allowed in TOD, a church may have a basketball court or a ball field as accessory. This would not prohibit that. What it would prohibit is a standalone outdoor recreation use. So that would be something like the WRAL soccer park where it's, it's only sole purpose is to be ball fields. And I can kind of go through the list from the code of the example, of the more specific examples that are in the code. Drive-in theater, campground, golf course, miniature golf, water park, amusement park, racetrack, stadium. So those are the kind of things that are in that category. So that, that's kind of the way to think about that.
So, John, we, you're saying we have the ability to recommend specific uses within that list and prohibit others?
Yes. Yeah, I would say, you know, one thing to be thoughtful about is that that list is not exhaustive. And so you know, sometimes there are, there are uses you might not think of. So just, you know, be careful how you use.
Yeah.
But you know, compared to the proposed, currently proposed ordinance, anything would be more lenient.
Well, I would, I agree with Commissioner Miller that if, if there is an opportunity to have a large recreation facility, stadium, or whatever it may be, that having that on a BRT line or a transit overlay district would, would be beneficial for City of Raleigh residents to use to get to and from instead of having a gigantic sea of parking around a facility like that. So um, is that something, Commissioner Miller, that we should table and just like discuss the uses later or?
Sure. Maybe for the next meeting, could staff bring back maybe what those two options might be? Obviously, one of the options is just striking outdoor recreation altogether as a prohibited use to allow for stadiums and that kind of thing. And then number two might be an intermediary, you know, striking the large arenas, but still allowing for other, other outdoor recreational uses, certainly for the local residents who lives there, who live there. And there's gonna be, I'm, I'm just generally the concept, there's a lot, gonna be a lot of dense living and a lot of missing middle housing hopefully and more affordable units. And so I want to make sure that the quality of life for the people that live there is, is still meaningful. And certainly at least eliminating restrictions on the ability for sort of the private sector to build some of those amenities for the local residents there that live along the BRT.
Okay, yep, we can bring that back. Okay, the next part C here talks about the RX standards applying to residential districts. And so it's basically just walking through any aspects of that that might be in conflict with other parts of the code and clarifying what that means. So this, the RX, the RX standards would take the place of the conventional development standards. And then maximum height, three stories and 50 feet. This is the part identified earlier where the attached house should be removed. And basically just clarifying any additional requirement.
We received a comment from DSAC about subsection C, the height limits. And it says, why is the height limited to three stories and 50 feet? In Blunt Street Commons, the builder built stacked townhomes, two stories stacked on top of two stories. These are common in urban markets such as DC. And there are three, at least three locations in the triangle where they're being proposed. And so the recommendation from DSAC was four stories and 60 feet to allow for the stacked townhomes.
I don't want to dig too much into that commentary, but I believe Blunt Street Commons, is that the former Raleigh Coachworks property? Near the Cargill plant? Is that what they're referring to? Cause that site is not, is approved, but that's a planned development district and the construction has not begun. But aside from that, the reason that the height is not taller is that this is, we're talking about existing residential districts where the existing height is three stories and 40 feet for some building types and 45 feet for other building types. And so I think there is a desire to have some sensitivity to the fact that these are already residentially zoned and are very likely to be adjacent to additional residential zoning that does not have the TOD applied and would still be a residential dimensional standard. And so it, the context that we're And so it, the context that we're talking about potentially applying TOD to a residential district is probably not appropriate for a taller height unless there's a rezoning process to establish that the base district is suited to a taller height.
Sure.
Well, I think, I know of which product they're referring to is right there at the corner of, well, it's next to, I guess, at the corner of Peace and Person. And they did two over two stacked right there.
Oh, yeah.
Across the street from, they're across the street from one to one and a half to two-story residential. But that was back in the day, I think that was a PDD, I think is what we called it back then. I don't know what that previous zoning was. I mean, it's, because I walked that street a lot and it doesn't go unnoticed by me that there are two over twos across the street from one and two-story houses and I, on an older street, and I feel like the scale, in my opinion, the scale does not seem out of proportion. It seems appropriate, but there are a lot of older, large growth trees. I mean, just the scale, the street in general has been, you know, has evolved over time. So I, you know, because again, I sort of contemplate that when I walk by there. And so I don't know, again, if I lived across the street and someone wanted to come and build a two over two. And it was a brand-new street or, you know, the street was redone and there were brand-new street trees put in, what the impact would be, but I don't feel like that that scale is inappropriate in that urban of a setting.
Yeah, I guess it's, I think part of their thinking that we had when we were developing these standards is that part of the TOD will be very close to downtown. But other parts of it will extend miles from downtown. So if you look out Western Boulevard, you're going past Blue Ridge Road. You know, those areas are not similar to a downtown context. And so this does have to be sensitive to all of the areas where it might be mapped. But yeah, if you have, you know, obviously, it's the will of the committee, what you'd like to recommend.
I think that's a totally fair statement, John. I guess, and maybe we're coming up to this later and unfortunately, we're on page three. I know Commissioner Miller was like, yeah, we can probably whip through this. We all just go through it. But at three stories and 50 feet, if I'm an applicant and I'm willing to do the affordable housing, does, I'm still limited to three stories in this condition. I don't get a height bonus in this situation if I'm willing to put in whatever the number was of affordable housing units, one-third.
That's an interesting question. I don't think we anticipated someone attempting to do that. I don't see a specific prohibition on that. I suppose technically this could be read to say that someone could make use of the density bonus in a residential, with a residential base district.
And so then the way you did the math, if it's 50%, it would be 1.5 additional units, which would bump up to two, so you could theoretically be five stories.
Yeah.
And then we'll probably get to this, but maybe if we get to it later, we won't even have to tackle it. But you said one-third affordable units. I thought you said in the additional stories. Is it, is it one-third affordable housing in the additional stories or in the entire development? All, you know, density bonus and non-density bonus stories?
It's the units within the extra stories.
Okay, thank you.
It's one-third of those. Yeah. So the overall the overall thought is that the total percentage, if it was a fully residential development that, and it would vary depending on the original height of the base district, that's probably going to be 12 to 15% of the overall units in the development. That one-third of the additional height. And that's what the market research suggested would potentially have a good rate of success. I'm getting a note from Eric that that this provision in C1C is, would prohibit the density bonus from being applied. Because it doesn't specifically make an exception for that. I think that is probably why we didn't think to add an additional exception, because we thought that kind of carried that weight.
So on the first question of whether we should expand to four stories and 60 feet, I'm going to defer to the other two commissioners on that question. You have more practical experience on that than I do. So in terms of whether that transition, and I was trying to pull back up the map and look at the full area. So just to tick that one off the list, what are your thoughts on two over two and whether we should change that to four stories and 60 feet?
Commissioner Miller, I guess if C1C is is fixed and firm, I think we need, and there is no bonus available within this clause, then I think we need to entertain the option of having that four and 60.
Okay.
To get that more, to get more flexibility to potential developers for housing.
Sounds good to me.
Is there also a way, and I think we've requested before and not to, I'm hoping there's like a magic button on GIS. But is there a way to sort of get a sense of really what we're talking about with the potential opportunities to do that? I mean, if they're fairly limited. I'd probably, I'd be easier convinced to do it if, if we do start to get into some areas where you're sort of inside and in the edges of neighborhoods, I think it could be, it could become sort of an issue to have a 60-foot unit built next to a one-story home.
I mean, I can tell you for the initial mapping on Western and Southern, the primary impact area for that is, like I said earlier, probably Western Boulevard outside of Blue Ridge Road or US1 towards Cary. There's a number of areas, you know, in that Powell Drive neighborhood. And you've seen a few zoning cases there, Carolina Avenue in the last year or two, where you do have R6 zoning pretty much right up against Western Boulevard. I think for the initial mapping, that would be. And we, I can say in our work on developing the map, we are not looking at a lot of application. And again, it is pretty much right along the roadway. But, you know, then you immediately, once you're past that first parcel, well, you're right into an R6 neighborhood, a lot of times with single-family units. So that's where I would see it. And then for the later mapping, New Bern, of course, has even more of that context.
Then I'm okay pushing that forward to the full commission.
At four stories and 60 feet?
Yes, ma'am.
That sounds good to me. So changing that to four stories and 50, 60 feet, and maybe also a clarification that the density bonus for affordable housing is not permitted. With respect to this height restriction.
That sounds good.
Great. And I know that we've been only gone through three pages, but we've gone through over half the comments. So I think they're just concentrated on the first couple of pages. I did want to add, I had another comment on the prohibited uses on B that they'd be interested in adding vape and smoke shops to the prohibited uses in the TOD. Is that something that the UDO provides for?
I think we can probably do that. We would need to check the legality of that level of, you know, specifying the product type that's allowed to be sold. David might have more knowledge about that.
Then as my own narrative as well, I might also be interested, if we're, if we're going to go in that direction, then also sweepstakes parlors. And that kind of thing.
Yeah, I need to take a look and see what we normally don't, except for certain limited circumstances, prohibit the sale of specific products. And so I need to take a look at that. It would we would have to create a definition of what met that requirement. Does a C store that also sells cigarettes, cigarette smoking or vaping, does that violate it? Or is it something that where a certain percentage of their sales? The UDO right now doesn't have that use carved out as such. And so we'd have to come up with some way to define that use in a way that didn't prohibit anybody that sold smoking or vaping products. Because then you lose all your all your retail sales. Basically, you lose grocery stores, you lose convenience stores, pharmacies and so forth will be kicked out because most of those do sell those products in some form or fashion.
What about
Sorry, Commissioner Miller. David, I think that was a comment from me. I think it was strictly, that's all they sell is smoke products. So I knew that was kind of a stretch. And I know that the intent of the prohibited uses is to minimize or maximize transit use and minimize car, the length of car, but also I was thinking of just healthy living in general.
I think that's right. And another, you know, the same kind of concept, if this is going to be more affordable housing and try and focus on where that is, you know, we hear a lot of the comments about how we would make provisions in certain more wealthy areas of the city and want to make sure that, you know, we're doing what we can to to protect the quality of life in this area as well. And so just generally thinking about some of the more predatory industries from, because we don't have payday loans anymore, but sweepstakes, sweepstakes parlors and tobacco shops and that kind of thing might be something else to consider, but it sounds like there's additional research that needs to be done there. Come back.
Okay. I feel like we kind of covered the frontage part earlier. So parking, that will be discussed in a later section in this draft ordinance. Outdoor storage. Outdoor storage is kind of an odd duck in the sense that it is has screening provisions, even when it's sort of just associated with a different principal use. It's, so we just wanted to be clear that that outdoor storage is not allowed in this district, even if it doesn't necessarily fall into one of the prohibited uses that it's just clarifying in that respect. And so that would be things like a contractor that stores equipment, a building supplier, wholesale supplier that has outdoor storage of raw materials, of wood, ancillary products. It could be vehicle storage, those types of things. The kind of things you kind of associate with industrial areas. So now we're getting into the height and the density bonuses. And so you have the minimum height, two stories. You may have an open lot building type. So if you have a a subdivision, townhouse development, something where there's a common amenity area that's on a separate lot, that would not be prohibited. So you can still have a club house or something. And then the 50% bonus for affordable units. And so rounds up to the nearest whole number. And the additional stories have to be for residential use. And then within those additional stories, the provisions of the one-third of the units within, again, the additional stories are affordable for 50% of area median income for 50 years of affordability. And then a 30% height bonus, and that would be, does not contain any residential uses. And so in most cases, the only time a developer is going to be proposing a building taller than one or two stories that is not, that contains no residential uses, of course, is going to be an office building. And could, but could still have retail on the first floor or just be office on the first floor. You would get additional. And so the thought there is that if you're not going to provide affordable housing, it would also be good if there are things that are generating employment, that are activating the areas around the station. And so that then is increasing ridership of the bus service, also potentially increasing patronage of businesses that are in the station area. So just kind of creating that vibrant area that we're looking for.
I think we've got some comments on that. I received a number of comments from the public about this. The, the general thrust of it is that there's, there's been a lot of study around this topic. And obviously, affordable housing and providing more affordable housing is a one of the key goals of all of city leadership right now. And we have been moving away from, you know, just taking each rezoning project and sort of making them require new affordable housing, instead trying to shift to a more wholesale approach of encouraging it in several other ways. And I think this could be really an incredible opportunity to push for more affordable housing and to incentivize it. But that being said, it sounds like a number of cities have studied this and have attempted it. And it's very difficult to get a density bonus that is robust enough to make the numbers work. To make affordable housing, to make people participate in the program. And I know that we've, in, that's happened in many other cities and where they put this kind of thing in place, but then no one could, could take advantage of it. And it sounds like the, from the presentation, that these recommendations may be more on the left side of that slide where it's more high risk that folks might not take advantage of the program. And in addition, I know Raleigh has seen, you know, other, other similar programs in the downtown overly district where that was sort of the goal, but, but no one ended up participating in the program for various reasons. So I think we might have Mac Paul on the line. He participated in an Urban Land Institute group that studied this issue. And I think Ken Bowers was in that group as well. And wanted to know if we have any more specific data on what some of the parameters this might need to be. And sort of what we've learned from some of the cities and whether we think this will be sufficient encouraging more affordable housing.
Mr. Miller, if you'd like, I can go ahead and unmute Mac Paul if you'd like to hear from him now.
If he would like to be heard from, that would be great.
Good afternoon, Jerry Miller. Thanks. This is Mac Paul. Morning Star Law. I'll be brief, but yeah, Ken and I served on a task force or committee in the context of a housing summit that the city helped sponsor a few years ago. And we did, we used these multifamily development scenarios in different urban and suburban contact contexts to look at the gap in terms of financing privately and including affordable housing in a project. And what sort of funding gap did that create? I'm trying to go back and get, and Ken may have the results of all of that work. I've asked for it and hope I can provide it to this committee, you know, within the next few days or week or so. I would just, I just want to make the I would just, I just want to make the point, as you said, you know, it's often hard to achieve the affordable housing through a density bonus. And I know Karen Lotto over in Durham has done a lot of analysis for Durham on this topic. So I think there's a lot of good data out there. But I, in the EDAT plan that the city worked on that led to this TOD overlay. You know, there's some comments in there about the. Rezoning policy should reflect this bonus system so that rezonings don't get around affordable housing by, you know, just doing a rezoning and not offering the density bonus and using that to get a greater height. And so I'm, you know, I'm really concerned. We end right, end up back in that sort of debate about every zoning case in the transit corridor. And, you know, why are you rezoning and not using the density bonus? And you need to provide affordable housing. So I just think it's important to look at this closely and try to do our best to get it right. And also consider, you know, whether the, the equity fund and some other tools that are out there might also be in play to get affordable housing incorporated into development projects. But we've seen, you know, there, I don't know if there's been a project yet built in Raleigh. It's a market rate project that's incorporated, incorporated affordable units. So it's a tricky issue that, you know, again, I, I just, before we go down that path and find ourselves like in a massive fight. This on every case in the, in the BRT corridor, especially when we want density to occur there. That would be the worst thing if, you know, we just, people just say, okay, I'm just not going to build higher density because it's not worth the fight of arguing about the affordable housing piece. We, you know, we need affordable housing, but we also need density in those. So I'll, I'll try to get the information that was done a couple of years ago. If Ken doesn't already have that available. And, you know, this is, as you've all said, a very important topic and. We do need the affordable housing.
Yeah, I think those are all good points. You know, like I said earlier, the numbers that are in this draft are based on market research done by the consultant during the EDAT process and which probably incorporate a lot of the information that Mac is talking about. And so we, you know. We think it's a, it's. A, as. The best that we can judge based on the information that we have is seems like a high likelihood of being used. But also, as I said before, if we discover that it's not working, then that might be the time to, to. To adjust the numbers. And then the other thing I would say is there, there have been other places where this type of thing hasn't worked, but I think really what we are hearing from the public and from city council is that our approach to affordable housing is going to be all of the above. That we are going to try to use zoning tools. We're going to try to use. You know, the city spending directly, helping with financing, different housing types. You know, missing middle, of course, cottage court, accessory dwelling unit, that really it's going to be an all fronts approach. And so this is the zoning front. And in terms of the policy. You know, I think there's two things I heard from Mac about the rezoning policy, which is you don't want applicants to avoid a rezoning because they're afraid they're going to be asked for affordable units. I'm not trying to be glib at all when I say, in my experience, I have yet to see that be the case. If anything, I think it's the opposite, that there's some obligation for the city council to say no from time to time when additional height is requested by rezoning. If they want people to make use of a density bonus. If, if applicants feel very certain that they can simply rezone for a taller height, then yeah, there's not really good reason to try to make use of a bonus. The third thing I'll say about that is we do have a policy, I believe from the equity, the EDAT process, that does say that taller buildings should include affordable units. I know for certain that there's a policy like that in the midtown plan. And the issue that we've run into there is that under North Carolina law, the city council and the city are vulnerable to litigation. If those policies are relied on too heavily in making, making a denial motion for a rezoning request. And so. I think we are doing as much as we can with the tools that we have. And then we really just have to, like I said, take an all of the above approach.
So, um, on the topic of the ULI report, yeah, I was the main staff support person representing the city as client to a ULI technical assistance panel. The, the take the panel, so there's, there's different ways of looking at how do you cross subsidize. Affordable units in a otherwise market rate development. The, the tact that the ULI panel took was to look at, at what was the, the difference between market rate rent and the affordable rent? And what, and how much debt service support did you lose? So if, what, what? So if the, if the market rate rent on a unit was let's say $1,500 a month, so round numbers about $18,000 a year and you're going to lose. You had to go down $900, so $600 a month times 12 would be about $6,000, $7,200. What, how much mortgage could that? Long-term debt, could that $7,200 that you're not getting in rent have supported? And they came up with a gap at the time somewhere around $60,000 per unit. That was the. So, so then the question was, could you construct a density bonus system? That would fill a $60,000 gap on the affordable units and the, the answer they gave was, was no, you, you could not. What the, what the EDAT report did was what I would call residual land value analysis, which is basically you take a hypothetical project that's a three stories. And you, you pro forma it with all, everything except the land value. And then the residual is kind of what you could pay for the land and have that development pencil. Then you pro forma the bonus project and see if the residuals is good or better than the non-bonus product. If the residual is better than theoretically, that project, that project, that project could bid more for the land than the non-bonus project. A third way to look at it would be, you know, assuming the land is priced for a three-story development, but you get to build five. Then the land cost for the additional units is zero. So every additional market rate unit has a zero land cost that could then be subsidized the, the affordable unit. So you, again, you try to look at what the gap is in terms of how much money has to be liberated to underwrite the unit with the lower rent. And how many free land cost free units on the market rate side do I need to have to do that? The, there is, there are other considerations here. And one of them is that the typical market rate developer builds the project and then sells it to an institutional investor for the. For the income stream and is the institutional investor going to buy a building that has a 30-year provision for affordable units that has to be monitored every year? Where you need to report both the rental, the rental rate being charged, the affordable units and verify, income verify the tenants. There are certainly mixed income projects all over major cities. And, in America that do have to do this, but it's, it's something that's very, very uncommon in North Carolina specifically and in other sort of Sunbelt markets such as ours. So I don't actually know the answer to that question. That would be one thing to maybe pose to someone who's in the multifamily development process. But the, the EDAT analysis was based on a conceptual pro formas of projects with those, both the base density and at the bonus height. And whether or not the bonus was good enough to make the financial performance of the development better. Obviously, there's always lots of assumptions that go into a perform analysis that people could argue with and numbers such as land costs and construction costs are, are constantly changing. Which is why you need to not put the, get too close to the margin of it working because it's likely that in, you know. An increase in say raw material cost or construction labor cost might upset that calculation if you're trying to eke out the last possible affordable unit for the development, meaning that. And the risk you're running here is that the developer will decide it's not worth it to do, take the bonus. We're just going to build a three stories instead of five. And then you get less density along your transit system. So I think that is the risk. That's being taken by putting this provision in there, but it's hard to really know for certain whether it will work until you try it and see if anyone takes us up on it. If no one takes us up on it, the, one of the opportunities, things that might happen is that you get a couple lower scale buildings when you would have liked to have something denser developed in the TOD area. That said, this type of incentive-based inclusionary zoning is the only game in town. If we are trying to get market rate or affordable units and otherwise market rate developments. I also would note that the affordable housing bond has, I think, something like a $20 million set aside for public-private partnership and someone wanting to take advantage of the bonus would be eligible to apply to the city for additional gap financing. And they, that, because we would be benchmarking that against the type of gap financing we put into 4% tax credit projects. Those requests couldn't be too outlandish. And I'm sure our housing staff in evaluating those would want to see some sort of pro forma analysis to show that the, that the money being requested was reasonable and, and related to, to an actual good faith estimate of what the financing gap is. That's basically all the information I can provide today, but I do have the ULI report sitting pretty handy. Then we could provide that to the committee.
Sounds like we don't need it handy because we just have you. That was the most amazing explanation of three different models of developing pro formas off the top of your head that I think I could ever, could ever experience. That was something, that was pretty amazing.
I have been noodling on this for like 14 years.
Yeah.
And, uh, so yeah, it's, um, we've done a lot of research. I do think that, um, there's a checkered, there's, you look at these types of, of, sort of voluntary bonus-based programs. I think in my experience, there's usually some sort of additional sweetener in there in terms of gap financing that helps, helps, that works with the bonus. Cause I think the thing that people forget about the bonus is yes, you get more density, but you also have to build a bigger building, which is more expensive to build. And so, uh, it's not like, it's not like it's just free money in order to take advantage of the bonus. You have to enlarge the size of your project and deal with the additional complexities of providing the inclusionary units. And so a lot of communities, you know, either provide tax abatement, which obviously the city in North Carolina, we're not legally allowed to do, but, but we can, of course, provide grant money and other types of subsidy, which we do for affordable projects today.
Outstanding. Well, as a general policy matter, personally, I know that affordable housing is just such a critical issue in our city and trying to incentivize it all the ways that we, we can is, is sort of a top priority. I would personally be in favor of doing sort of anything that encourages it. And then if too many people start building affordable housing, look at scaling it back as opposed to making it on the more risky scale on that, that slide. That it's more risky that people might not use it and then change it in a couple of years because the city's just growing so fast, even losing a year or two to this process. I think, I think it's a little bit of a risk. So I'd rather have everyone building it and figure out how to, how to roll it back than the other way around. Maybe we can look at some additional, gather some additional information and come back at the next meeting. With, with this and maybe an alternative that might be a little bit. Have a little bit more incentive to build the affordable housing based on the robust amount of data that exists generally in the universe and then also in Ken's mind.
Commissioner. I'm sorry, Commissioner, just a quick question for Mr. Bowers. Um, that ULI report, is that something you could email this, this group?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Um, I think there may even still be a link to it on the ULI triangle website, but, uh.
Okay.
Barring that, I will, I'll either get you a link or get you the report itself because I still have it.
Great. Thanks.
So also can I, can I, because I agree with you, Commissioner Miller, that was impressive, Mr. Bowers, but. I need to put it in layman's terms to make sure I, I can absorb everything you just shared in, in, in. What I think I heard you say was that. In, in other areas and through the amount of data that's out there. That just increasing the bonus, increasing the density or the bonus does not necessarily mean that we're going to have more affordable housing because you still have to underwrite it. You've still got to build a builder bit bigger. Build a bigger building. You know, it, it plays into what the builders long-term or short-term exit strategy is and sort of all these other factors. And it sounded like what you said was there are these options, but typically what you have found and what the ULI report is going to tell us when we read it is that to Mr. Anagnos' point, yes, it's a multi-layered approach. And a lot of times when we're talking specifically about density bonuses. There's generally another sweetener involved. Is that? Did I get all that right?
Yeah, I mean, I think. When, because this is, because this has been such a hot topic and because we debated it endlessly in the city of Raleigh without ever actually implementing a program. Whenever I was at a national planning conference and this, and there were someone, this was, this was a session proposal, I always went to it. And at the end of it, I would always ask, well, how many units are you producing or what subsidy level? And typically unless there was something of, unless there was additional resources brought to the table. That they're either very shallow levels of subsidy, like 80% of AMI as opposed to something like 60 or 50, or the number of units was extremely modest. I think, you know, the, the thing about, you know, the, the bonus, and I use the example three to five because you're still in the realm of woodframed construction. So, you know, you go taller than that and suddenly all the unit costs go up because you're, you're having to build in, in concrete and steel. If you add, if you have too high an inclusionary percentage, the, the smaller project is actually more profitable on a percentage basis than the bigger project. At that point, you can't ask someone to both outlay a larger. To, you know, to, to take on a bigger riskier project that actually promises a lower return than the smaller project. And this, you know, again, I, of the, of the ways of looking at this, I theoretically kind of prefer the land residual approach. You got to look at it from the, which, which project idea is going to be able to shoulder a higher land cost? Because, you know, when land goes up for sale, it typically goes the highest bidder. So if the, if the smaller project can actually bid more for the land than the bigger project, then they're going to win. So I think, you know, all of these things have to be predicated because, you know, the ideal, the real estate market is not an idealized. You know, market from a textbook. It's got a lot of frictions and imperfect information and other things underneath it. But unfortunately, we have to kind of start with some sort of theoretical framework to think about it. I think, again, without implementing something, we're never going to know whether or not this can work or not. I think we need to start with what is a reasonable. Take this space based, based on some sort of well-grounded theoretical model to come up with provisions and then test them in the market to see if they work. That is kind of, and I think, you know. We've, we've put forth in this ordinance. One provision is basically you put an extra story on your building and you could put seven market rate units in there. If you, if you also provide three affordable units. And we have some modeling that backs up that that's reasonable. But obviously, if you, if you change that ratio to, you know, to be eight to two or something, then that becomes potentially more likely to be, uh, to be accepted in the marketplace and have market rate developers do it. That's all I can really give you at this point.
Or something fewer than 50% affordable housing or, you know. Or the like. I know there have been some other cities that, that some folks pointed me to and Arlington, it sounds, looks like they have been successful in. Encouraging affordable housing through density bonuses without providing municipal funding.
Yeah, I think, you know, one thing to be somewhat careful about is that Arlington is a very expensive market. And we're becoming more expensive, which is troubling. But, you know, uh, if you look at a very, very high rent market, you're going to find that the, the, the value of the market rate unit is well above its construction cost. And in, in a, in a more. In a more liberal functioning market, you would. in a more liberal functioning market, you would expect there to be a much smaller difference between the value of the unit based on its income stream and the cost to construct it. But if your market is constrained such that that there's a big supply constraint, then the cross subsidy between the market rate units and the affordable units is more powerful. Because there's just more profit in the market rate units if you can get approval to build them. So I mean, I think that's a that's another consideration. I I think one thing that's changed in our market is when then when, you know, I was looking at this and even several years ago when the ULI report was done, rents are much higher now. So, you know, the economics of this is different than it was than it was then. There may be more opportunity for for cross subsidy.
And at the same time, the building costs have never been higher. So it's sort of.
Yeah, I mean, that's that's obviously there's been some rise in building costs and then the impact of the pandemic and all the supply chain problems and lumber and everything else. And some of this may be long lasting, some of it may be short term, and it's kind of hard to know exactly where construction costs will be and material costs will be a year from now. But they're certainly very elevated right now.
Great. Well, I I think that we've touched on that topic and it sounds like we're going to get more information and maybe come back with a more with with perhaps an alternative that is more on the right side of that that slide on being low risk that people that developers will not take advantage of the program and come back at the next meeting for that item. Looking at the clock, we have about eight minutes left. I have a couple of comments here that I could tick through just as things that we can address for the next meeting. And then and then look at calendars and talk about asking council for an extension of time. So the first item was a comment from DSAC. It said, in the use standards, why are so many uses only allowed in at the corner of buildings or at street corners? And would this disallow an entire bottom floor of a structure from having a mix of those uses?
Sorry, I was muted. So the limited use standards that are detailed in these sections here, there are several of them. It's basically different uses of retail, personal service, restaurant. There's a consistent treatment of those types of uses in the OX and the RX districts without the TOD. So if I is just a regular OX district or regular RX district. In in RX, what those limited use standards say across most of those uses is because those uses are prohibited in our, excuse me, not prohibited, they are limited uses in residential mixed use. And so what that means is you cannot have them as standalone. You have to meet the limited use standard. And what the limited use standard says is it in RX, it has to be at the corner of two public streets and it has a maximum size. So if I have an RX district and I build an apartment building, I can have a small retail outlet at if I'm in the corner of two public streets at that corner as long as it's not larger than 4,000 square feet. So those are all being retained. It's basically relaxing those existing standards. That comment seems to be suggesting that those are new standards that this is applying when in fact, it's the exact opposite. The TOD is actually removing existing limited use standards that put limitations on whether you can establish a non office commercial use in RX or OX. So in the other more intense districts, neighborhood mixed use, commercial mixed use, absolutely if TOD is applied, you can have a standalone retail as long, well, you can have you'd have to have a two story building, but it could all be retail or it could be retail with a tattoo parlor above it or something like that. So this is saying in those districts where normally there's these extra standards, those extra standards are going to be relaxed.
Sounds good. The next item, what is the definition of long term bicycle parking? And does that mean, does that definition include a requirement that it be covered or fully enclosed or conditioned?
That is right. So long term bicycle parking is in the parking requirements in Chapter Seven of the UDO. And those are attached to most of your more intense development type or more it's bike use, but you know, higher intensity residential uses and then commercial uses typically have bicycle parking required. And so that does mean it has to at least be covered and I believe partially enclosed. So it doesn't necessarily have to be fully enclosed. It could be, I think, sort of a lean to type of enclosure, but essentially has to be in some way protected from the elements so that someone can park a bicycle. And it's not just a bike rack on the sidewalk out front. It has to be, you know, that the bicycle is treated as something that someone is going to use as a vehicle daily, that they might live there or work there. And that it really is serving bicycle as transport as long term transportation option, not just, well, I just showed up and I'm going to park my bike while I go get a Snickers.
Okay, and and that is defined elsewhere?
Yes, it's defined in Chapter Seven in the parking section.
Excellent. Next additional item on parking. The flat floor plate, this was a this was a question from Commissioner Rains. Could you clarify? It says facing street or all around? Confirm and clarify.
The flat floor plate would be for the entire structure. And the purpose of that is the expectation that at some point in the future, there may be a desire to convert that parking structure to conditioned space. And that when you have floor plates that are not flat, it can be more difficult to modify the structure to accommodate conditioned space.
See, Commissioner O'Havers Associate has joined us. Very nice.
Shut up just in time for the end of the meeting.
Excellent. Maybe some if if that's confusing, maybe consider adding a clarification that that applies all around instead of just street facing for the next meeting. And two other or three other quick comments. One recommend exempting the city, state or county of applicable park requirements from the from the TOD requirements. I am in favor of that. I know that was a topic. Are the other commissioners on board with changing eliminating or exempting the city and state and county parks from these requirements?
Yes. Support that.
Great. And then striking the expansion clause of 25% keeping the facility in place longer. That was a recommendation from Commissioner Rains. Could you clarify that point?
Yeah, Commissioner Miller, this was just a comment. Maybe it's it's requires further discussion, but if if we allow expansion on a facility, even if it's 25% and the intent is to transform the TOD areas, it just seems like this just gives possibility of keeping those type of facilities in place longer. It's, I mean, sometimes, you know, you can have something that would be indefinite.
I did have a question of that. This is the uses made nonconforming. It said that the expansion, it could be expanded by 25%. Would that would that mean an expansion of the nonconforming use or just an expansion of the facility where the original areas with the nonconforming use?
So it's a different standard between structure and use. So if it's a nonconforming structure, say, it's only one story or potentially could even, well, yeah, in this case be something like it's only one story. So then it would be you could expand by 25 25%. But then then the expansion would have to be two story. Because it would have to comply with the TOD. For the use, let me double check, but in my recollection, the there is no expansion for use. You have to go to the Board of Adjustment for that.
Gotcha. So if there is an expansion of a nonconforming structure, the expansion would still have to comply with the new requirements.
Yes.
But there could not be an expansion of a nonconforming use even within a new conforming structure expansion.
That is my understanding, but let me. Yeah, that's right.
Well, Commissioner Miller, if I could, I mean, because I had a couple of questions around that. We we still have more of this to get through, so we might dig in a little bit deeper on some of that, correct?
Yes, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's that's fine because I I had some questions around that, too. I know we need to, it's six o'clock and we need to look at the
So maybe we'll just
Extension.
A pen and and that one. I think that goes over all of my comments as well. Oh, on the prohibited structures and uses, I guess, putting a pin in this too and talking about whether they can be rebuilt if damaged. I saw on the first slide, it said that a single family home or a single story structure could be rebuilt if damaged. And I was wondering if some of those other nonconforming uses could be rebuilt if constructed.
Yes, that's the intent of that part is to basically say, as long as it's built back, the you know, in the same way it was before. And really, even we're thinking about potentially if that is in the form of, you know, sort of modifying the design aspect. So I think one of the specific hypotheticals we thought about was a fast food restaurant. A lot of fast food restaurants are updating their facades these days with a more modern look. And so that type of thing, that would be voluntary. The owner is voluntarily not operating the use and then doing making changes to the structure. But it is the same structure. It just looks different on the outside. So that would be fine, the way this is written.
Gotcha. But if a nonconforming use was destroyed, could that and it when if it was rebuilt with a nonconforming use still apply in that building? I guess maybe just the general concept, so we have some.
Yeah, if they had a nonconforming structure and a nonconforming use, they would have to build back the structure as it was. And then they would have to reestablish the use within two years. And, you know, we had some discussion about, well, what at what point in the development process are you are you considered to have reestablished the use? And I actually, I think we had said that the typical way that's treated is when you get permitted to presumably it's the zoning permit essentially. And so so that and that's hypothetical, nonconforming structure, nonconforming use, as long as you build the structure back the way it was and get the use going again, get your zoning permit within two years, you are fine. If it's a conforming structure and a nonconforming use, you can build back the structure anyway because it's conforming. And then the use again is just a two year gap. So you can't be can't be vacated for more than two years.
Understood. Okay. Well, any other comments or additional items that anyone wants to see for the next meeting? Great. Well, on that point, then, it looks like the next text change committee meeting is the 17th. Assuming we can get through this at the 17th, it might, we might have some comments for staff that might take longer than a week for them to turn around. So maybe we
Seventeenth.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong month.
I was going to say 17th of what?
August, our next text change committee meeting because we're off.
Because we're off in July, we don't have one in July?
Correct.
So.
So the deadlines act right now is August 14th. Our next text change committee meeting is the 17th. If we have comments for staff, it might take them longer than one week to turn those around to us. And so because our next planning commission is one week later, the 24th. So probably we could get comments back by the 14th and voted out on the 14th. That would be a 31 day extension from the original deadline. So maybe we could ask for a 45 day extension. Does that sound, do I do that math right?
Commissioner Miller, so I'm sorry, question question on the 14th of August. That's a Saturday.
That's just the original deadline. Tag.
So done, okay.
That's true.
Thank you.
So I think we might need an additional 45 days after the 14th. Does that sound right to staff and any math majors out there?
I'm sorry, what was the timing again?
A 45 day extension, I think, would give us until see.
September, basically.
That would be August 1st, excuse me, October 1st.
October 1st, great. So we would have two, three planning commission, yeah, that would give us. So could we ask council for a 45 day extension on this item? Do we need to make a motion for that?
Can I can I ask a question right quick?
Sure.
And I'm definitely not one that jumps for special meetings, but I did notice in the backup, I mean, we still have three items that are not scheduled for discussion. Another multiple module building height is going to take some time. So are we just backing this up? Do we want to try to get another meeting before summer break and get this out? Or do we just want to plow through?
So we couldn't get this out before summer break anyway because our last planning commission meeting is a week from today. So we wouldn't be able to vote it out of, we could vote out a committee, but we couldn't vote it out of planning commission.
Well, that's fine. You have to twist my arm. I just, I know we've got some stuff coming up.
But we might load up on text changes this fall. That's a good point.
If if you were looking at a special meeting, you may want to look at the first week in August because city council does not have a meeting that first week in August. They their first meeting in August is the 17th, same day as the text change committee. So if you wanted to meet, have a special meeting, I would consider the week before your first planning commission meeting in August.
Would that mean that folks have to come back a week early for us?
I don't know.
And would this be in person? I guess that's another topic. I know there was an email going around about potentially changing to in person meetings. I'd certainly say for anything over the summer, we'll probably get better attendance and keep it virtual.
Well, I threw that out there. I don't I don't want anybody, including us or others, to come back during the break. We've had a lot on our plate, so we'll just we'll trudge through. I guess my only other request would be John, your presentation was good. Can you also send that out? Because I don't completely missing something. It wasn't in the backup.
That's right. What I can do is I can add it to the backup for the report of this committee at next week's planning commission meeting.
Perfect. That'd be great. Thank you very much.
This is Keegan. I just had one other comment to add related to potential scheduling of a special meeting. John or Ken or some or even David, they could fill in if I'm incorrect, but I think the planning commission would be back. Are you all back at the first meeting in August on the 3rd?
We're back August 10th and 24th.
Excuse me, August 10th. Okay, gotcha. Yeah, I mean, I would say that there are some pending items and there's probably others that will come out in the coming weeks that'll be ready to be referred to the planning commission or excuse me, to the text change committee shortly after you all resume work that we're drafting right now. So there will be even more. So if there is an opportunity for a special meeting, I think that would be wise, even if it doesn't occur before the regularly scheduled meeting.
Okay, well, I'm for it. You guys want to pencil in as long as it's okay with with staff and the other committee members, I'm fine scheduling work all summer if you want to.
So I'm I'm sorry. So I'm, I'm sorry, can somebody just define, can somebody bookend our quote unquote break? Because I just got meetings, I mean, because I just did a recurring, so I've got meetings throughout the whole dang summer. I don't know when we start and stop.
So we have nothing in July.
Okay, so anything, anything prior to July is on, anything during July is off, and then first thing in August is on.
First thing in August is August tenth, regular meeting.
Gotcha. Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Yes, but I'd be happy, I don't know what that means for staff resources, but it's fine by my schedule to meet on the third. Maybe we could even put this on the agenda and and one other item if we wanted to depend. Maybe I could talk to staff, too, once we get closer to that agenda being published to see sort of what our backlog from a couple of weeks off is going to look like and and how we can make sure we push these through.
Yeah, I'm happy to try and coordinate with some of the other staff members to see what dates work best. And I can send out some potential options if the committee is in needable. A special meeting date.
That'd be great. I think we're going to be getting some of your committee members, too. All right. Well, I think that that's it for today. And there's no other comments. Thank you, everybody for participating, and we'll be in touch about any special meetings over the summer.
Hey, real quick, did you all make a motion and vote on recommending a forty, I know y'all talked about a forty-five day extension. Did y'all actually take action?
No, we actually even talked about taking action and then we didn't do it. So I made a motion to request a forty-five day extension of, what is this, TC seventeen A twenty, is that right?
Right.
All those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thanks, guys.
Good night.
Good night.